Council called the meeting order for the record is November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two is six oh one P M. Should have said Wednesday, just for the austerity of only meeting on Wednesday once a year. We'll begin tonight's Reggert City Council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burn. Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If at all, please rise and join us in the pledge. Next up will be the community invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Mark Thornton of Capital Church. If you at all, please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
Hallelujah, Father God, again, we thank you for this day, a day that you've made and one that we purpose to rejoice and be glad in. We thank you for the opportunity to live in such an amazing community that is led by such amazing leaders, Lord, and we pray, I pray for all of those on the city council, Heavenly Father, and all of those in this room who are striving to make this a better place to live, Heavenly Father, I pray for your wisdom, I pray for your guidance, I pray for your discernment, Heavenly Father, I pray that as they rule, that they would rule with integrity, Lord, and discernment, Heavenly Father, knowing what it is that you've called us to be as a community of faith and a a community of people, Heavenly Father. And I pray, God, for every ounce of virtue and energy that they expend in trying to make this a better community, God, I pray that you would pour it back on them, press down, shaken together, and running all over, Heavenly Father, as they give of their time and of their energy, Heavenly Father, as they sacrifice their lives, Heavenly Father, for this community, God, I pray that you would strengthen their marriages, that you would strengthen their families, Lord, that nothing that is important to them would suffer because of the time and the energy that they're giving to make Meridian such an amazing place, Lord, and so we thank you again for the opportunity to come before you, asking for your wisdom and discernment as they rule, and we give you all the glory and all the praise in Jesus' name.
Thank you. Next up is adoption of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
One of the items in tonight's agenda, item seventeen, had a noticing error, so that is going to have to be renoticed. And we will continue that to twelve sixteen. So anybody who might be online wanting to hear that or in the audience and for staff, we'd like to move that up to consider that first to me, take the action first on that item, since it's going to be very quick procedural vote, to move that, and then we'll follow with the rest of the action items. So Mr. Mayor, with with that one minor change, I move adoption of the agenda as published.
I have a motion of second to adoption as published or as noted for the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. And the agenda is adopted. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Have a motion of second to approve the consent agendas. Are you in discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda. So item thirteen will be a proclamation. Actually, did I skip over anything? No, do we not have a public forum this evening to skip over that? Oh, that's after this. I apologize. Next, we'll do the proclamation. So is Mr. Bacon here? This evening? Okay, if you'll join me at the podium. So council tonight will be doing a proclamation that was requested by Jeffrey Bacon, the federal project manager at the Idaho Workforce Development Council. And this is for National Apprenticeship Month. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then turn it over to to Bacon for some comments. Whereas National Apprenticeship Month is celebrating its eighth anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn and preparing a pathway to well-paying careers in Meridian and across the nation. And whereas registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. And whereas Meridian recognizes the role of registered apprenticeship in expanding opportunities in our workforce for all qualified individuals who wish to contribute to Idaho's industries. And whereas registered apprenticeship is a proven and industry-driven training model that can build up a workforce for the jobs necessary to help our economy thrive, especially jobs and growth industries like manufacturing, healthcare, high-tech, energy, and construction. And whereas the state of Idaho and Meridian recognize that registered apprenticeships deliver a critical talent pipeline that can help address our state's pressing issues such as modernizing our cybersecurity response, addressing public health, and strengthening our state's infrastructure. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert E. Simpson, hereby proclaim November two thousand and twenty-two as National Apprenticeship Month. In the city of Meridian, an urge to the residents of our community and communities across the country to recognize the value of and support apprenticeships during the week and throughout the year, dated the ninth day of November twenty-twenty-second. So I want to present this to you on behalf of myself and city council and the city of Meridian.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I won't take up too much of your time, but we're working to help employers and apprentices with the enrollment registered apprenticeship programs. May a large part of why we're doing this is it leads to quality jobs with good benefits for the employees and the employers get a talent pipeline that's steady and good quality. In good jobs so that they don't leave the state. Thanks.
Next time up is our public forum. It's quick, maybe we want to sign up on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then with that, we'll move into our action items. First item up is item seventeen, the Public Hearing for Lost Rapids West, S H P two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero one four. Mr. Parsons, comments?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that the there's discrepancy in the noticing for this particular project. So we are asking, I had a chance to talk it over with the applicant this afternoon before tonight's hearing. Let them know that it will have to be renoticed and the staff report updated to reflect the correct project description. And so we're hoping to have that placed on the November, excuse me, the December sixth hearing is what the clerk has conveyed to me could be the next available date for that particular project.
Thank you, council. Any questions for staff? Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland. Yes, I would move that we continue the Public Hearing for Lost Rapids West, S H P two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero one four to December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Have a motion of second to continue this item. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is continued. But the next item up is item for Public Hearing for two thousand and twenty-two impact fee study. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to present to you the two thousand and twenty-two impact fee studies presented to you by the Impact Fee Committee. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll take a quick second to acknowledge someone in the room. Again, one of our fellow council members, Mr. Bert, just want to take my time to say congratulations to Mr. Bert, soon to be Senator Bert. We're proud of you. Congrats on the win this morning. So again, just want to say thank you. Started go a different direction, but Mr. Senator Bert, looking forward to calling you that and starting January one. So back to the impact fee study. Yeah. Um, the impact of a study, again, we did hire a consultant, Dwayne Guthrie. He has the presentation ready for you. I'm going to hand this over to him. The study has been presented to the public via the agenda. So again, with this, we're going to have Dwayne present the study to you, council, and to the citizens. We do have myself and some directors here to answer any questions about the parks, police, or fire departments. So with that, I will hand this over to Dwayne Guthrie, our consultant who put together this study. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Let me just make sure you guys can hear me okay.
You're good, Dwayne.
Good. So we have a quick slideshow. This is a public hearing. So if you want me to, I could have about ten slides I can run through to provide some context for the people in the audience. The purpose of the, this is the formal adoption process now of the impact fees. If you remember, we had a work session back in October, early October. You had a chance to hear this presentation. The fees have not changed since then. But you've had time to reflect on the document and get input from people in the community. So hopefully, we're at a point where we can proceed. The update is required in Idaho periodically. We're actually accelerating the update because the your community, Meridian, has grown faster over the last few years than we anticipated. And so not only has that caused the revenues to come in, but it's also accelerated your capital program. So the city was at the point of needing to identify some additional projects for the for the capital program that's required by Idaho Impact Fee Act. The second reason for the update is that capital costs have increased significantly over the last few years. So staff definitely wanted to get their input on the latest cost factors, which are summarized in this slide. We're looking at three different impact fees, parks and recreation. Those are the roads that are shown in green here on this slide. Police impact fee shown in blue and then fire at the bottom shown in red. And so for each one of these, what we've done is a very quantitative process where we have to show our work and show that the fees are proportionate. And so we identified infrastructure standards, both the amount that we have today versus the amount from the previous study. And then we have cost factors for each one of those line items. And you can see generally across the board, the infrastructure standards have gone up. Meridian has invested a lot in capital items over the last few years. So there's been slight increase in your infrastructure standards. The biggest increase, though, has been in the cost factors. And you can kind of see the way things, we assumed costs back in two thousand and nineteen versus the updated cost for the two thousand and twenty-two study. And the last column just kind of does a simple math to show the ratio of the previous cost to the today's cost. So a lot of those have gone up, you know, at least fourteen percent. Some of them have doubled and even almost tripled in some cases. Any questions on those? You've heard this presentation, so this is more or less for the folks in the audience. But if you have questions, feel free to ask. So here's the general method. We we are basing the fees on current standards. So for each one of the three, we have identified the cost components and what the standards are, and then we have to allocate those to residential development for the parks fee, and then for police and fire, it's residential and non-residential development. So we use functional population to do that cost allocation. That's basically the math is based on residents in the community and jobs in the community with some adjustments for commuting patterns. The capital program for police is simple. We have one line item over the next ten years. The continuing on with the public safety training facility referred to as phase three, it's going to be approximately seventeen thousand square feet and a cost of about eleven point two million dollars, which is slightly more than the impact fees eligible cost. So there will be some other revenues that'll help pay for that project. Here's the draft police fees. The increase of infrastructure needed is at the top. The cost allocation that I mentioned is there to come up with a cost per service unit. So the service unit for residential is a person, and then we use vehicle trips pulling into non-residential development as the cost allocation to differentiate fees between commercial development and all other types of development. So the fees are slightly higher for commercial. They have higher trip generation rates, more calls for service due to shoplifting and crimes and at retail restaurant type locations. So those those are fees are a little bit higher for police for retail. The next fee is fire, a little more complicated capital program. We can see over the next ten years, we have additional stations. We've have equipment rolling stock for those stations, and we also have items to be added to make the stations and the rolling stock functional. So we have radios and cameras and personal safe, safety gear, breathing apparatus, all those types of things are part of their fee. So together, it's adding roughly twenty-one thousand square feet of additional building space and about six point six million dollars in additional apparatus and equipment. So together, it's about a twenty-five million dollar capital improvement program, and the impact fees will be paying for approximately twenty-two million of that. So the draft impact fee for fire, similar layout with the the infrastructure needed at the top. We allocate the cost to get fees by type, I mean, by size of housing unit, which are based on five different size thresholds. And then we have the two non-residential categories, same as we have for the police fire. Again, the commercial fees are slightly higher for non-residential for fire department. Capital program for parks and recreation includes some additional buildings. Adding on to some parks, great, that are shown here in three different colors to help differentiate those, are four different colors, sorry. And then we're also adding some additional park sites down here at the bottom. This is a major addition to the fees this time around. We only had a very small allocation for additional park sites in the two thousand and nineteen study. But the new study is anticipating buying approximately a hundred and twenty acres over the next ten years, and it costs eighteen million dollars. So that's a significant, significant portion of the capital program. Altogether, this is the most expensive capital program, seventy-one million dollars, and impact fees are paying for about sixty-six point eight million. So here's the three major categories for parks. We have park improvements. We have the land for additional sites, and we have buildings. You can see the relative contribution of those to the total. And then the fees are also done just for residential using the five-size thresholds. So altogether, this is everything shown in yellow, golden kind of shading here are the new fees. Here's the proposed total. Here's the current total. So for instance, for the smallest sized house, the current amount is one thousand and ninety-five dollars. The proposed amount is two thousand and six hundred and six dollars. So that goes up fifteen hundred and eleven dollars, which is about two point four times as much as the current fee. So that's what this last column is showing the increase. They're basically at least doubling for all the fees across the board and similar kind of results for non-residential. So that's my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions from the audience or from council members and turn it back to you guys.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Todd or Dwayne?
Councilman Burn. So I appreciate the presentation. I asked my questions a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, whenever you originally made the presentation. So I don't have any questions. I I just hope that we hear a lot of feedback from folks about this one. This is, this is, this is a these are big increases. And so I'm really interested to hear from, you know, our community partners and what their thoughts and feelings are about.
Councilman Hoagland. Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Guthrie, I was just curious, the process, and I previously served on council owner in the middle of a recession, so there wasn't a lot of growth going on. But if that comes about again, I hope not, but you know, there's talk of a potential downturn in the economy here in the near future, but we never know. That crystal ball is always a little murky. But if that were to happen, of course, there's not as much growth. You don't have as much impact, but in terms of fees, we might find that cost of land goes down, the cost of housing goes down, supplies. At what point do you recommend that we take another look at that if if prices are going the other direction?
Well, you're certainly free to update the fees as often as you want. The state requires you to update them every five years. This is, you know, basically, I think in your situation, the city was anticipating a little shorter timeframe, like this time around, we're doing it three years. Basically, the amount of the fees are, the methodology for the fees is self-adjusting to the growth rate. So if development slows down, like you said, revenues will fall off, and the need for capital improvements will also go away or slow down. So it's not a problem that you'll be collecting a lot of money or that you've obligated yourself to debt. None of the methodology assumes that you're going to be borrowing any money. So it's not like you'll have to be making debt service payments. So I think you're in a okay situation. The only need would be if prices fall significantly, then you could update the fees to to reflect that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Comment?
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that's something we need to keep a close eye on. I mean, growth needs to pay for for the things that we need. That's where the impact's coming from. Because of the growth, we need these additional facilities, vehicles, land for parks. But at the same time, if if we hit slowdown, and it is quite the lengthy period of time and costs go down, then that fee becomes a larger percentage of the cost of that, that, that home. So it's just something we just have to be aware of, that it's just, you don't set it and wait five years and then look at it again type of thing. But if the economic conditions change, we just have to be aware of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Maybe a question for Mr. Lawyer, for you, Mr. Mayor, but if I recall, if if that was something too that the council grew concerned about, and I think it's something that's obviously top of mind for all of us, the council could suspend collecting impact fees for a certain period of time as well, maybe in effort to spur economic growth if we felt that was necessary. There's anything would prevent us from suspending these, is there?
There's nothing to suspend, but I think this city has to pay the pay the cost for them if they are waived.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I could add one more thing. One of the things we did during the recession, like Councilman Rohegan was talking about, is we made them do at C of O instead of a building permit, that they had an opportunity to actually get the instructions started. So there are other ways to adjust if we need to consider that depending on on that, on the economy and what the building looks like. But there certainly are ways to do that. But I would agree with Mr. Mayor that simply waiving the fee means that the city then will have to make up that fee.
Yep. Great. You both appreciate that.
And maybe just to play this out, because I've been thinking about this a little bit in the in the context of previous conversations, but I assume that there would be nothing to prevent us from having another public hearing at any point in time where we would want to discuss the fees, and you could lower the fee at that point in time without doing a study, because the study is what the study is. But you could do a public hearing to adjust the fee if you were just to say, let's drop it twenty-five percent, and the city would not have to repay that because we've adjusted the fee.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, we certainly are able to collect less than the full recovery fee if if the council wishes. My only recommendation is just because of the way the code is drafted, that you're going to want to have some data points in which to base that on.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any additional questions for staff? Or Mr. Guthrie? Okay, well, hold tight, Mr. Guthrie. This was a public hearing. Is there anybody that like to provide testimony on this item at this time? And we have nobody online except for A C H D, which I don't believe they want to provide comment on this topic. But if there's anybody in the room that'd like to come forward at this time? Seeing no one coming forward. Counsel, do you have any questions for any of the departments that are here with items in the C F P? Or I'm sorry, in the impact fee? Mr. Lavoy.
Mr. Mayor, I do again appreciate the opportunity. I do want to remind council and the citizens that the study does include our capital improvement plan, which is part of the state statute that we must present. So within the study is the capital improvement plan, which Dwayne did review, and I just wanted to verify or just remind you that that we are presenting the cap five-year capital improvement plan for those three divisions inclusive in this plan to meet the state statute requirements. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Another comment for the record. This process is kind of the tail end of a lot of work that finance has done and all of our directors. You know, the council's been involved in discussions and and we're aware of these capital, long-term capital costs that we need to maintain levels of service. And we've had these discussions with our various departments, council meetings, and outside of meetings. So I think a lot of the the good work has been vetted those prior discussions. So appreciate the efforts of all the directors and finance, particularly leading the charge on this, making sure that it's accurate. And in compliance with code is very important. No, no further questions for me either, light of all those discussions that have already.
Thank you, Mr. Borton. Just to again, feed off what you're speaking about, the report that Mr. Guthrie is presenting to you has been approved by the board, by the committee members themselves. So you have a public engagement there. They have pre-supported the study. They are an integral part to developing this study, and Dwayne is presenting what they agree to as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mary, just to help me remind me on process, we could continue this public hearing next week since we are doing additional readings if we want, if the council want to still seek additional feedback.
Yes, sir.
So council, I guess the questions for what's your pleasure on closing or continuing the public hearing? Knowing that only the first reading is on tonight's agenda. Councilman Borton.
No objection to having a continued public hearing, a second chance. We're missing a couple of council members as well that couldn't hurt. This is a big decision. Continue with the next week. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lavoy, are you seeking clarification?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I know on the agenda today is number nineteen. That's just the first reading, I believe. So I stood, I was making sure that this isn't going to interfere with nineteen. I didn't want to mess your agenda up.
Right. That's why I was asking this, sir.
Thank you.
About. So, yeah, we'll continue the process moving forward. Okay. So with that, do I have a motion as such to continue seconded? Councilman Borton.
Move that we continue the Public Hearing for the two thousand and twenty-two impact fee study to next Tuesday, November
Second the motion. I have a motion of second to continue the public hearing to November fifteenth. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is continued. Thank you all for getting us this far, and we'll see if we hear from the community again next week. Okay, so with that, we will move on to a different fee. Item, next item up is the Public Hearing for Proposed two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three winter-spring fee schedule, the Meridian Parks and Recreation. Item next item up is a public hearing for proposed 2022, 2023 winter spring fee schedule, the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department. Open this public hearing with comments from Ms. Fletcher.
Good evening. Yes, I'm just here bringing you guys the 2023 winter spring fees for Meridian Parks Recreation. And I'm open to any questions, if there are any questions. In front of you also.
Counsel, would you, is there additional information that you would like to hear from the Parks and Rec Department on the fees? Seeing head shakes. And do you have any questions for staff? Okay, is there, well, with that, I think you can take a seat and and is there anybody that like to provide public testimony on this item? If Margaret from ACHD would like to, otherwise. Motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I move that we close the public hearing for the 2022, 2023 winter spring fee schedule for Parks and Recreation Department.
Second.
Second.
Have motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, saying bye bye, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Guys have it and the public hearing is closed. Next item up is item six, the resolution number 22 dash 2354. Ask quick to read this resolution by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's a resolution adopting the 2022, 2023 winter spring schedule of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department, authorizing the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department to collect such fees and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Other comment, I would move approval of resolution number 22 dash 2354.
Second.
Have a motion of second to our resolution number 22 dash 2354. Is there any discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Burton. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Ogleman.
Aye.
Allies' motion carries and the item is agreed to. Thank you, Jenna. The next item listed on the agenda was already disposed of. So we'll move on to the our last public hearing is the public hearing is second reading of boards 22 dash 2002. We will first take public comment if there's any additional public comment on this item.
Mr. Mayor, there is. I have the signup sheet in the back, but the Idaho Humane Society is represented.
Okay. If you'd like to come forward, be recognized for three minutes.
Jeff Rosenthal, CEO of the Idaho Humane Society, 1300 South Bird Street, Boise. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I Officer Shields had surgery last week, so she's homebound, not here unfortunately. I thought it might be helpful just to provide a little bit of background to increase your understanding of why we're here looking at this ordinance. Might be helpful to kind of know what's transpired overall. In 2011, I wrote a bill that was carried by Senator Quarter. And the and the reason for the bill was it was an attempt to replace a very archaic state statute, very antiquated with a contemporary, potentially dangerous and dangerous dog law. And based on what was typically done in other states. And one of the reasons for that is we we have a lot of variation between different communities. So we have that native county and how dangerous dogs have been handled or vicious dogs have been handled and throughout the state. And the idea was that perhaps if we had a better state statute, that would be a tool that law enforcement could use in every single community if they if they deemed. Anyway, the the bill dealt with both dogs that injured other dogs and livestock and also humans and nearly passed, but then was derailed, not really because of lack of support, but just political infighting. So in 2016, Representative Moyle gave him the opportunity to come back again with another bill. This one focused exclusively on dogs that injure human beings. And the reason for that was that one of the obstacles we face at the state level are some agricultural special interest groups that employ dogs for the purpose of guarding livestock. And so they're very concerned about regulation of these dogs. Some of those dogs, the purpose for them is to attack other dogs that get near their stock. That was successful and and we passed that bill. Seemed to be solved, but there was another problem with it where prosecutors could actually choose not to handle our cases. So we had to go back two years later, do it again. Finally, we had a good law in place. It eliminated Idaho being what was called up until then a wonderfully bite state. And it provided some workable restrictions that protected some of the personal property rights of dog owners, but also was effective at dealing with dogs that injured humans and also provided the court for the first time with the ability to order a dog destroyed based on a first episode, which was necessary in some cases. But there was still, we were still left with some problems. And one being, obviously, we still didn't have a state law that dealt with dogs that injured other dogs. And the other being just a timing issue. It takes a long time for cases to get into court. And in many cases, we have to impound certain dogs. Sometimes we impound at home, but most of the time we keep them in the shelter, especially under COVID. It was taking well over three months to get into into court, sometimes six months, sometimes more than a year. And so that provided a big burden on us. And so initially, one more problem has emerged. And that is we have a, we have officers have the choice between two different laws, typically a local ordinance and dealing with an animal issue and a state statute. And when those two laws are very different and when the process is very different, there's a potential for an equal protection issue. And so that's why we have started working back with our local communities, trying to make the local ordinances more aligned with state statute, this using the same definitions and something of a similar process. And with that, I will stand for any particular questions you may have about how we operate in regards to this.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Hey, Dr. Rosenthal, real quick, not not a question. Just wanted maybe on behalf of the council to pass healthy healing on to Officer Shields. I know sometimes it gets a little prickly about our engagement with you guys, but covering from surgeries is never fun, particularly in the cold weather. So please wish her a speedy recovery on behalf of all of us. We appreciate her.
Thanks, you, I will.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony this time? So nobody online and this department is not jumping up and down either. Okay, so I guess the the we do have the second reading on. I guess the question, do you want to continue the public hearing? Through the third reading or close the public hearing at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I think the intent for this with the dogs was to go through all three readings. So I think we can continue this.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, if you would like to continue the public hearing, then we'll have the court do the second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I move that we have continued the public hearing of ordinance 22 dash 2002 to November 15th, 2022.
Motion second to continue the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, saying bye bye, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay, yes, having the public hearing is continued and ask quick to read, do the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ordinance amending Meridian City Code Section 621, adding definitions of animal control agency, animal control officer, animal control shelter, at risk dog, bite, dangerous dog euthanasia, justify provocation, physically attack, provoke and serious injury, and deleting definition of vicious dog, amending Meridian City Code Section 622 regarding animal control officers, city animal shelter and animal control agency, repealing and replacing Meridian City Code Section 626 regarding designation and management of dangerous or at risk dogs, amending Meridian City Code Section 628P regarding failure to comply with provisions regarding dangerous and at risk dogs, repealing any conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council, you've heard this ordinance read by titles, anybody that like it read in its entirety? Okay, and we will bring it back next week for the third public hearing, third reading. So with that, we will move on to our action and ordinances. Item 19, which is the first reading of orders number 22 dash 2004. Ask court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and ordinance adopting the 2022 development impact fee study, adopting an amended capital improvements plan, repealing and replacing Meridian City Code Section 10712 E2 concerning development impact fees, voiding conflicting ordinances, resolutions and orders and providing an effective date.
Counsel, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that like it read in its entirety? Then we will have the second reading next week. Next item up is item 20, ordinance number 22 dash 2005. Ask court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and ordinance annexing the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section 36, town 36 Township for North Range One West Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly describe and exhibit A rezoning 4.54 acres of such real property from RUT, where a mineral transition to R15 medium high density residential zoning district, directing city staff to alter all use and area maps as well as the official zoning maps and official maps depicting the boundaries and zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Writing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, repealing conflicting ordinances and dividing an effective date.
Thank you, council, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety? Or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I move approval of ordinance number 22 dash 2005 with with mayor deciding clerk to attest in suspension of rules if necessary.
Councilman Borden.
Second.
It's a beautiful motion and beautiful second. The the order number 22 dash 2005 has been motion seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Burton. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borden. Ogleman.
Aye. Allies' motion carries and the ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything on our future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to, Councilman Cavanagh?
Oh, no, Mr. Mayor, shake my head, no, no future meeting topics.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, for a future meeting topics, I just thought since we have a state senator elect within our midst, maybe we should devote a meeting to all the things that we need from the legislature and get our wish list together, so.
I'll I'll second that if that was a motion.
Love to listen. Bring it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I move that we adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, all in favor, saying bye bye, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Guys have it, we are adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.
You're welcome, Luke.